Hello and welcome. My name is Mary Beth McEachran-Margolis. I'm a member of the Melrose League of Women Voters, and I'm the Community Outreach Director for MMTV. Tonight, we are proud to present a candidate forum for the contested school committee election on this November 2nd. The League is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization with a mission of voter registration, voter education, and voter support dedicated to making democracy work. As an organization, we take positions on issues after appropriate study, but we do not support any individual candidates. This election day, the voters of Melrose will choose four among four candidates for three open seats for school committee. The candidates are John Connolly, Jennifer McAndrew, incumbent, Jennifer Rosi Thomas, incumbent, and Dory Withy. This forum is being conducted on Zoom and is being recorded. Audience members will be muted, and no questions or comments will be accepted via the chat this evening. The recording of this forum will be available on mmtv3.org, the local cable TV stations, and the Melrose League of Women Voters website, which is l w v-dash-melrose.org. In addition to this forum, the League has a virtual voter information guide with information on local candidates running for office. The online guide is accessible at vote411.org. That's vote411.org. It can also be found via a link on our League's website, l w v-dash-melrose.org. Written responses from each candidate will be posted, including tonight's school committee candidates. However, to date, we have only received responses from one city council candidate. This evening's moderator is Dr. Florence Selden, a member of the League of Women Voters of Cape Cod. We are most appreciative of her dedication and professionalism and her willingness to serve as our neutral moderator tonight. The League also wishes to thank MMTV for its assistance in broadcasting, all the League members who have given their time and efforts, and the candidates who have agreed to appear and participate. All those thank yous having been said, we have asked that the candidates not spend time thanking anyone tonight as we are giving them a very short time limits for answering questions, and we want them to use every minute for their answers. And now, please give your attention to our moderator, Dr. Florence Selden.
Thank you very much, Mary Beth, and I'm pleased to be here. I want to just say, in order for a sponsoring league like Melrose to appear neutral and non-biased, state league policy is to have a trained person from another league in the state moderate the forum, as I am doing tonight. So, in the interest of fairness, I am a resident of Chatham, and I do not know anyone or have any connection to anybody in Melrose. So, welcome and delighted that you are running and that Melrose has a contested election for the seats. Let me just go over the format. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement. Then there will be three questions, and they will have two, one at a time, and two minutes to respond to each question, and then one minute for a closing statement. Maureen, hold up the 30-second sign. When it's 30 seconds before the end, Maureen will hold up that sign, and then when the candidate has reached the limit of time, will hold up the stop sign. I have tried to rotate our responses so that nobody is first all the time or last. And so with that, we're going to start with opening statements, and Dory Withy will open the opening statements. Dory?
You so much. It is an honor and a true privilege to be alongside each of you tonight, so thank you. I'm a mom of two. I have a two-year-old daughter and a six-year-old son that attends the Horace Mann. I'm also a Human Rights Commissioner here in Melrose, where I've overseen the Pride event for the past year. I'm also an educator. I started my career as a special education teacher, and I'm now a literacy consultant, where I work alongside districts across the country on coming up with strong academic visions and overall programming. I've seen firsthand how a child's education can impact their ability to succeed in life, and I strongly believe that each and every child deserves a great education.
Thank you, Dory. John Connolly, you're next. Unmute yourself, John. You're muted. No, you're still muted.
Okay, how's that?
There you go.
Okay. John Connolly, 10 Lincoln Street. And I'm veteran U.S. Navy, and I'm fully retired from the federal civil service. My wife Teresa, she's retired from the crossing guard after 20 years. And the kids are grown, in their 40s. But the kids, I'm interested in having, keeping the kids in school, giving them ABCs, math, which went down 16% last year, history, English, but nothing, no, anything controversial should go through the parents and the school administration. And if they want to put something in, that's fine, but I would say no controversial stuff. The kids don't need that. One thing about the Melrose for the doctor here, it's got more railroad stations than any other city in the state because there was a lot of railroadies that retired up here, bought homes up here.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
Interesting bit of information. Our third speaker will be Jennifer Rosi Thomas.
Good evening. Thank you so much for putting this together to the League of Women Voters. I want to say that I am thrilled and privileged to be on the school committee, and I would like to be reelected. I have learned so much in the last four years about, you know, the role of the school committee and all the ups and downs of the four years, three mayors in three years, a successful override campaign, a retiring superintendent, a new superintendent, and a global pandemic. So I'd like to put those experiences to work in the next four years and see some things through, like the BB estate plant, I mean, I'm sorry, the BB school coming back to us and figuring out what to do with that, how to handle enrollment that's growing, and how to continue to modernize and improve our education for all. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Jen McAndrew.
Thank you so much and good evening, everyone. Thanks to everyone for being with us, especially during the Red Sox game. Appreciate you tuning in. My name is Jen McAndrew. I serve as the current Chair of the School Committee, and I'm very proud to do so. I'm finishing up my first term, and I'm asking for your vote, honor, before November 2nd to continue our work together. My husband Dave and I are proud parents of three students in the Melrose Public Schools at the middle school and the high school. We're both active community and school volunteers. In my professional career, I've built a career in communications and public policy in federal and state government, and currently in higher education at Tufts University. I believe in the power of civic engagement and in the great potential of a thriving, well-resourced public school system. I'm really looking forward to a great conversation tonight, and I thank you all for being part of it.
Well, thank you. And our first question, your first question. If you had an unlimited amount of funding monies available to spend on just one aspect of education in Melrose, what would that one thing be? And I will be glad to repeat the question if anybody needs to as we go through. So let me just say it once, one more time. If you had an unlimited amount of funding monies available to spend on just one aspect of education in Melrose, what would that one thing be? And John, the first response goes to you.
Well, the first thing it wouldn't be was not the physical buildings. The school buildings are all in pretty good shape. The, I would say that the special needs children. This COVID has set everybody back a little, but it's set the special needs children back a little further. They have to start from scratch. So I would say that's the best, but the special needs, they need the money. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, John. Jennifer Rosi Thomas.
It's a really, that's a really tough question. I think that I would put it into supporting teachers and their ability to have time to develop curriculum because there's never enough planning time. So if I was going to put money into one aspect, it would be to help there be more time somehow. And that could be done through hiring more people to cover at different points in the day, for instance, at lunch or for meetings or... But there just, there just needs to be like more money to help with that. So if I was going to put it into one place, but it's a really tough question because it's also about time, which is, you know, you can't, it's time and money.
Jennifer, thank you. Jen McAndrew?
Thank you. Great question and a challenging one. I agree. I think I would say that I would put it into expanding program offerings for all students at all grade levels and really looking at intensive curriculum additions that we could do across the pre-K to 12 landscape. I'm thinking of things in the arts, writing for impact, in community engagement programs and in science and engineering. Those are just a few that are coming to mind right now to really build cross-grade, cross-curricular programming and really challenge ourselves in new and innovative ways. And that would be an expensive endeavor and one that would require investments in staff, absolutely, investments in planning time, as Jen mentioned, but also investments in how we use our space differently, probably, and investments in materials and curriculum. So I would really look at, are we offering every program that we can to meet the needs of every student so that they can thrive both as a Melrose Public School student but also throughout their life and career?
Thank you. And finally, Dory, you get the last.
Thank you so much. I also thought deeply about curriculum and really thinking through, how are we being innovative with the materials that we offer? And how are we spending time having the opportunity to revamp, evaluate, and think about what has been working historically for students and what hasn't been? And so I think I would start by really beginning to unearth, where have we had successes? And then beginning to think through, where do we want to innovate? Where do we want to push? What stories do we want to be telling across our curricular materials to ensure that all students have an opportunity to thrive? I'd look at our early literacy programming first and foremost. Again, I think with COVID and disruptions, we have had students who may have perhaps fallen behind. And so how do we accelerate learning in these moments through early literacy? I would also, again, think about how are we ensuring that students feel seen, heard, and respected in the materials as well? When we think about social studies, when we think about, again, our literacy texts that we're reading alongside one another. And so I think it would be great to be in a position to not only think about the materials and to go through an evaluation process, but also to think through, how can we be innovative? How can we reimagine? How can we recreate? And then how can we also support implementation based on some of the findings that we've had?
Thank you. Second question. The population in Melrose is slowly becoming more diverse, but our school employees do not reflect that diversity. What can the school committee do, if anything, to create a more diverse staff in our schools to work with our changing student and family populations? And Jennifer Rosi Thomas, you get the first response.
Thank you so much. I have been spending some time working on this problem with the city's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force, as well as with the superintendent. And it's one of those things where it's a problem in a lot of suburban towns, and it's also a problem generally within the education system in Massachusetts and across the country. So even the Department of Secondary Education, DESI, is working on it too. So we're doing, we're doing a lot of anti-bias training so when we interview and recruit people, we're not thinking in any racist ways that we're not aware of or in any way that may exclude a candidate. And so the anti-bias work is really important, and then also developing pipelines of diverse staff who then love working in Melrose and encourage their friends and people that they know within their network to keep coming to Melrose. So it's, you have to build it, and once you build it, you can grow it. It's like anything else. But if you don't get to the point where you're building it, you know, you're going to keep the same non-diverse workforce. And we have an excellent, excellent workforce, and we need to just build more pipelines so kids see themselves in the educators that are in front of them. And it's an exciting thing to work on, and I look forward to working on it for four more years.
Thank you. Jennifer McAndrew, you're next. Jen?
Thank you. Very important question. Thank you for asking that. I think this is an example of a topic where we absolutely need a local, a regional, and a state approach. This is not something that Melrose alone is struggling with, and it's not something that Melrose alone can solve. Now, that's not to absolve us of any responsibility to improve our practices. I'm not at all saying that, but just, we know the numbers in Melrose, something like 4% to 5% of our educators are people of color. But put that in perspective, the number statewide of educators of color was 10%. Now it's down to 8%. So this is a real challenge. I'm glad that Melrose is a leader in the teacher diversification professional learning community that Ms. Rosi Thomas mentioned and that she has been a real leader on. We're bringing resources and statewide strategies to that work through DESI. And those partnerships, I think we can continue to expand our hiring efforts and also our retention efforts. And that includes compensating all educators well, and also it includes making sure that everyone feels supported and receives all of the professional development and training that they need to succeed with our students in Melrose. And finally, I would just highlight that I think we can continue to build and also expand some of the partnerships we have with colleges and universities, like our partnership with Salem State University. Maybe we can explore other ways to work with other colleges and universities that might be graduating diverse populations of educators. So those are just a few ideas. I agree, we need to keep moving forward on this front and keep supporting all of our educators in that effort. Thank you.
Dory?
Great, thanks so much. I think it's incredibly important for us to have a diverse teaching staff, and I do think some of the barriers could be, again, pay. I think, again, I don't know how deeply we are actively recruiting candidates of color in this current moment, but I know that if we aren't, we've really got to continue to prioritize there or we must prioritize there. And then I also think we have to really be asking ourselves, will candidates of color who come to work in Melrose feel safe? And will they feel affirmed by the environment in which they are in teaching? And so I think as someone who would potentially be new to the school committee, I would want to first learn a bit more about our recruitment efforts to understand what are the things that we're doing currently to recruit and retain candidates of color. And then at the same time, I would love to work with the superintendent to really think flexibly and expansively about how we appreciate all of the teachers that are, again, within the profession here in Melrose Public Schools. And really to think through, how do we ensure that we're living up to our own slogan as an organ, as a city, which is "One Community Open to All"? Right? And so again, I'd want us to be thinking through, how are we ensuring that candidates of color, teachers of color, feel respected, feel affirmed, and feel safe in our environment that will continue to have them stay?
Thank you. And John, you get the last response.
Perhaps we can, it's in marketing, maybe try a little different approach and try to reach the members of the minority communities by advertising and let the existing minorities, as teachers or genders or assistants, let them, involve them in the advertising. So you could even go out to the big city like Boston and put the word out, you know? It could be a marketing thing to bring them in, bring in the minorities and involve the minorities who are already in the system to hop out, and they might have a better approach. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last question. Beginning in 2019, all ninth-grade students are leveled in their core classes. That is, only one level of each core class is offered in order to give all ninth graders the same foundation of knowledge to start their high school journey. It's a long question. The school committee approved this annually by approving the course catalog. What are your thoughts on this approach? And would you change it? And we'll start with Jen McAndrew.
Thank you. So it's true that we are in the second year of that approach with this, which the school committee approved, and I do support it and would continue to support it so long as we see evidence, as we have, at least anecdotally so far, that it is supporting all students and their needs. I think it's really important when we talk about the unleveling of ninth grade that we talk about it as a real opportunity and not as taking something away from students. In fact, what the educators proposed is to teach the honors curriculum to every student. In other words, to raise the expectations and the curriculum across the grade level and to unlevel it by teaching the honors curriculum to everyone. There still is an opportunity for students who are performing at a grade level above in mathematics to be taking a higher-level mathematics and also for students in ninth grade to take one AP course, either AP Biology or AP European History. So there are opportunities for students who want to be additionally challenged in that way. But I think what it does is provide a strong basis across the ninth grade in that formative first year of high school of the same high-level expectation curriculum with all of their peers, not segregating out certain students in certain ways. And I think what we have heard so far, and again, it's early in this effort, and so I don't want to judge without additional data, but what we've heard so far is that it's been a very successful approach and that the educators are supportive of continuing that. But again, we'll keep looking at the data, keep looking at the results. We'll have a review of MCAS scores pretty soon as one and only one data point, and we'll look at all of our assessments going forward to make sure that this is, that continuing this is the right approach for Melrose High School.
Thank you. Dory Withy?
Great, thanks so much. I would say, you know, I think oftentimes leveling can have unintended consequences, right? And so hearing Jen just speak as well and realizing that, again, currently, we are teaching the honors curriculum to all students. That provides equitable opportunities across the board. And so I would love to be able to learn more about what's working, what that experience has been like for students and for families and for teachers as well, as we begin to think through, where do we continue to go as an organization? But I do think that we need to ensure that we're providing students with rigorous opportunities to productively struggle, to be able to really critically think in classrooms as well. And so if those are some of the things that are already happening through this decision, I'd love to continue to see the data, and I'd love for us to continue to ensure that students have those opportunities to really and truly go deeper in content and continue to make meaning in their learning.
Thank you. John?
I'm not quite sure what the meaning of the mechanics of one level means, but if it's working, well, you gotta go with it. But that's why I only know the eight, the eight, excuse me, the eight grades and then in the high school. So maybe this is a benefit of that, just sliding them along, getting them up to a path. Not all the kids are at the same level, and so maybe there could be a voluntary part of this where they can either enter or not enter the program. And I'm sorry, but that's all I know about the, I don't know that much about this topic.
Thank you, John. Jennifer Rosi Thomas?
Thank you. This is a great topic to bring up, the leveling. So to get rid of leveling and unleveling the ninth grade was something that happened in 2019. And then what happened in 2020 is we had a pandemic. So the unleveling is going to be something that we should look at, but we're going to look at it with a bunch of different lenses that are highly, highly complex. Moving to more online learning, moving to schools being closed for three months, and also looking at all that and how that factors in. So I think if we really, truly believe in equity for all, unleveling in the ninth grade is the right move. And based on what we heard from the principal and the head of the Humanities Department at the time, I'm sorry, the ELA Department, was that they were seeing in the, what would be considered the lowest class, which would be like college readiness classes, not honors classes. There, it was like it was a segregated school, and we did not want that. And I am very proud of that decision that the committee made together and unanimously to support the high school's recommendation in going to an unleveled system of classes for most of the classes because there are a bucket load of opportunities for higher-level courses along the way. So we wanted to start everyone off on the same level playing field as much as you can do that in life because we all know that every student is different, every family is different, opportunities are different for every child, right? But the least that we can do as a school system is to try to level it like it's, let's do all the same for the ninth grade. Let's give them all the same opportunity, and then let's see how they work. Let's see what they do. So I think rather than tracking students, which we said we got away from a long time ago, unleveling is the next step in that process of like basically saying, we want to give every single kid in their freshman year of high school the same opportunity to do the same work. So if they want to go to college, they can. Thank you.
And we're now ready for the closing statements. And Jennifer Rosi Thomas will start with your closing statement.
Thank you. Thanks again for this opportunity. I am thrilled to be on the Melrose School Committee. I've been very proud to be on the Melrose School Committee. I have two daughters, one that's in fourth grade and one that's in sixth grade. And my wife Andrea and I have lived here since 2006. And I really appreciate the opportunity to serve on the committee and the knowledge that I've gained that I want to apply for another four years. I am a school social worker. I'm a school adjustment counselor. I've worked with high-risk youth for 25 years. And so that's the work that I bring with me to the committee that's really longstanding. And then I really care about watching out for our most vulnerable students. I've worked within special ed schools and residential schools with high-risk youth for many years. And I promise that I will be watching out for, I'll put students at the center of every decision that I make if I'm given the opportunity to serve again for another four years. So thank you again for this opportunity.
Dory?
Thank you so much. It would be a privilege to serve on the school committee, and I would love to have your vote as well. I look forward to listening and to supporting the needs of the community members and families. I'm an educator. I've started my career in education. I've continued to stay. As I mentioned, I started off as a special education teacher, moved into a place where I'm able to now coach and support superintendents and principals, and it would be an honor to be able to take so much of what I've learned over the past number of years working across the country to Melrose. So thank you again.
Thank you. Jennifer, I'm sorry. Yes, Jennifer McAndrew?
Thank you so much to the organizers and my fellow candidates and the audience. In closing, I just want to acknowledge that this community has been incredibly strong and resilient during the COVID-19 pandemic. And this includes our students, our faculty, and our educators and our families. And while it has not always been smooth, we have come a long way as a district during this challenging time. As we continue to move through and hopefully soon beyond the pandemic, I want you to know that I respect your views, and I want to hear from everyone. In my first term, I've tried to listen to a wide range of voices, including our students, to respond to your outreach, to learn as much as I can and to use my best judgment. I know not everyone has agreed with me at every I know not everyone has agreed with me at every turn. I'm seeking another school committee term because I want to continue the conversation and because we continue to have very important work to do together. I ask for your vote, honor before November 2nd. Thank you all.
Thank you. And John, we will end with you.
I just like to end on a different note, that there was this wild world we're in now. There's a lot of dangers to young people. And teen suicide, that's something that they have to look at for their kids in high school. What's making them do this? What's the problem? Don't shy away from it. And also drugs. The drug called fentanyl, it's made in China, it comes through Mexico. And there was a young fellow who was a great hockey player, Jimmy Hayes over in Dorchester, and he just died suddenly. He led B.C. to a championship. He played for the Bruins, had everything going for him. Took fentanyl, a fake pill, fentanyl. It's killing a lot of the young people. So we have to keep that in mind, and I suppose we could get people to come in and speak to the young people. You know, it doesn't have to be too harsh, but just make them aware of, just to be careful of them. Thanks. I remember the League of Women Voters, they did the presidential debates in '76 and '80, and it was very nice.
We haven't done that for a long time, John.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I thank you all for a very thoughtful and informative discussion tonight, I think, and responses to the questions and your statements. I think I congratulate you all for running and willing to give the voters of Melrose a choice for whom they wish to serve for the school committee for the next four years. So I wish you all good luck, and I'm going to turn it over to Mary Beth so she can have a final word.
Thank you, Florence, and thank you to all the spectators who joined us this evening, and also to the candidates themselves for their thoughtful comments and for putting yourself out there and running. It's not an easy thing to do, and I wish you all the best of luck. Between now and November 2nd, we encourage you to check the vote411.org website that is sponsored by the League of Women Voters, and also to check our Melrose League website, which is L W V dash Melrose dot org. So you will find more information, answers to different questions that these candidates were asked to consider. And also, at least one city councilor has responded, and there may be more. So keep an eye on that. And please remember to vote on or before November 2nd. There will be early access voting available beginning October 25th, which is next Monday at Melrose City Hall, as well as absentee ballots. And you can get all that information through the city website or through the election office. Again, thank you to everybody who participated this evening, and we look forward to continuing the conversation after the election. Good luck.
Good night, everybody.